Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of October 13th, 2014. Let's all rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Please spell your name for us. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearing, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any item not on the agenda for that date or a plan for future agenda. And today we will start with the Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you for giving me a little time this morning for the Mayor's Award of Excellence, this time for the month of September, and is being presented to Police Sergeant Jeff Booker. He's with the LPD's Criminal Investigations Division. Worked with the city since 1990, nominated by Police Sergeant Kenneth Cozio in the categories of customer relations, productivity, and safety for his role in solving two homicides, both of which occurred on June 29th of 2013. The two victims, who did not know each other, were both beaten to death as they walked down the street. One was found injured near 14th and Benton at about 3:30 a.m., and the other was found dead an hour later in the 3800 block of L Street. The first victim died later at the hospital, and originally there was speculation that his injuries were due to an accidental fall. The second victim was an obvious homicide, and viable suspects were developed early. Sergeant Booker, a supervisor at the Criminal Investigations Unit, was assigned the lead in the second death. Cozio wrote that many LPD investigators collaborated on the initial investigation, including Sergeant Greg Sorensen and Investigator Troy Oxamet. Sergeant Booker, however, took on most of the responsibility to surgeon decision-making and coordination of the investigation. While looking into the second death, Booker stayed focused as he shifted through volumes of reports and multiple unrelated leads to determine what information was relevant. He finally received a break in early November when solid information surfaced that pointed to members of a gang. Within a week, Richard McLaughlin and Tyler Thornburg were arrested for both homicides. In many criminal investigations, some of the hardest work occurs following the arrest. In this case, Booker continued to build airtight cases against the two men despite a series of complications. Many gang members are unwilling to cooperate with law enforcement, and that can be compounded by witness intimidation. Cozio wrote, "Jeff overcame these obstacles by his hard work and commitment to obtain justice for the victims and consolation for the families of the victims." Cozio said Jeff's honesty and integrity and his ability to gain trust and cooperation were huge assets in resolving these homicides. Booker worked with Deputy County Attorney Bruce Prenda on strategy. Seven months after the arrest, the two suspects pled guilty to manslaughter and to use of a deadly weapon to commit a felony, and were given, both given, lengthy prison sentences. Cozio wrote that during this time, Booker continued to manage a heavy caseload of other investigations and served as SWAT team leader in addition. Cozio said Sergeant Booker prefers to share recognition with others, but all agreed that he deserved this award and more. Sergeant Booker, he said, makes us proud to be officers of the city of Lincoln. So it is my pleasure indeed today to present Sergeant Jeff Booker with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for September. Please join me in congratulating Jeff for his hard work and for his commitment to the city of Lincoln.
Maybe we should let the chief say a few words about his office.
I can go first?
Always take the last shot if you get it, so.
First of all, thanks for this award. For those of people who know me in this room, I'm not big on getting up here and tooting my own horn. It's more of a team thing. A lot of people in the back of this room are responsible for helping me in this case. I'd like to thank a couple people. Greg Sorensen, sitting in the back room, he's kind of been my mentor through my LPD career. He's meant a lot to me as an individual, as a person and a leader on LPD. Also, this award should be given to the David Mueller and Nathan Walton family. Spent many hours with them, got to know them. Grandma's fighting a stage four cancer right now, so this should be given to them. Thank you.
Mayor, thanks for recognizing Sergeant Jeff Booker for this award. He is very deserving of it, and he's very committed to the citizens of Lincoln and the Lincoln Police Department, as well as an awful lot of his friends and cohorts are here as well. They all come to work every day, committed to make Lincoln a safer place for everyone to live, and I feel proud to have members like this on the Lincoln Police Department, and this is what the city of Lincoln is all about. So, thank you very much.
Jeff, do you have family you want to introduce?
Here are my wife, Kathy. Kathy, she used to work at the police department. My kids live here. I told them.
Thank you very much for all you do, and all of you standing in the back, thank you very much for all you do every day. We sleep pretty good at night. Thanks to you guys. Thank you.
Clear the room. Yeah. Speaks more to what we've got for Lincoln than anything else. And I like that. Okay, Theresa, go ahead. First item, please.
All right. We would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. First item would be the public hearing consent agenda, items one through nine.
Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, we can vote on these items. Item one was introduced by Cook.
So moved.
A move by Roy.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? Call or roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Items five and six were introduced by Eskridge?
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Staff questions? Call or roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then would be our public hearing, liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. Item 10 is the application of venue to expand its Class CK liquor license to add an additional outdoor area measuring approximately 19 feet by 88 feet to the west at 4111 Pioneer Woods Drive, Suite 100. Please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
State your names.
Michael Ritter, 7510 Glen Oaks Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516.
Justin Cooksley, 6015 Sumner Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68506.
Okay. Any questions? You want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
We're gonna put an outdoor seating area for people to enjoy the nice weather when it does occur. We felt like this is a great expansion to be able to offer some more outdoor seating. I always enjoy sitting outdoors when it's really nice, and we wanted to offer that to our customers.
Very well.
Which side of your building is that gonna be on?
It's gonna be on the west side.
West side, okay. Okay.
So this'll run north from your entrance, then?
Yep. Up to, yeah, so the length of the building.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, guys. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of item 10.
Seconded by Roy. Any discussion? Call or roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then would be our public hearing ordinance's second reading, item 11, amending Title 10 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to vehicles and traffic.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is John McQuinn. I'm the Chief City Prosecutor for the city of Lincoln. This ordinance comes before you. Its origin, building is safe, or I'm sorry, public works sends to me and somebody else in my office drafts of the snow emergency declarations so that we review them during the fall. They're ready then for enactment when they need to be, if they need to be during the winter months. So, in reviewing those, I came across just a couple of things that I thought could be clearer in these ordinances, and they're before you. Really, this only does four things. First is it adds snow emergency parking ban violations to the list that parking control officers can issue citations for. The list is already rather lengthy. Generally, Lincoln Police Department officers do it, but in the event that LPD is short-staffed or they have other issues, this gives them flexibility, and it's nothing out of the ordinary for them to do. Second thing it does is clarify the fine for parking in a snow emergency district. Those generally are business districts. They're defined in 10.41, and while you could get to where you thought the fine should be, it was a rather lengthy process to go through. This just makes it a direct route, says here's the fine. So, that's just basically clarification of what's happened in the past. It's nothing new or different. Third thing it does, we delete a reference in Title 10, Chapter 40, 120. 1006030 no longer exists, so the reference in that particular section shouldn't be there. And finally, in the snow emergency districts section, all we did was specify where you find the fine. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Carl.
Thank you. Okay, so circumstance, if we have a, I'm not sure of my terminology, but if we have a snow emergency such that you park on even sides of the street one day and odd sides the next day?
Right.
And the snowplows come through? And can you then move to the other side of the street even though it's still technically the wrong day or not? I mean, I'm just wondering about common sense situations like that and to help people be able to get through better, do you do that?
I can just say what the legality is, and the legality is that you cannot park on a side that's banned during the duration of the declared snow emergency.
Okay.
Whether or not it's a practical matter, that makes common sense. It may in some cases, however, there've been numerous examples where the snowplows have had to make more than one pass, so the first clearing is not necessarily the final stage in the removal.
Okay.
And this ensures that they don't run into vehicles mistakenly think, well, I can park there, the snowplows have been down.
All right, thanks. And then, this seems to mainly be applying to, applied to parking control officers, and those individuals are typically in the downtown core area of the city. Does this suggest that they're gonna be locating, extending out more?
No. No, their area of control is unchanged.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, next item, please.
I'll call item 12, approving a real estate purchase agreement between the city and Nebco, authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 901 North Sixth Street.
Jocelyn Golden from the city law department. I'm here to offer this item up for city council consideration. It's for the sale of the Public Works Building located at 901 Sixth Street. It was a former Public Works Street maintenance site that those facilities have since been moved to the MSC. This real estate purchase agreement that you're being asked to approve would sell this site and the building on it to Nebco. This has already been approved by the planning commission as in conformance with a comprehensive plan, and has been approved by you, city council, also declaring this a surplus that occurred in March of 2014. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Carl. Thanks. Yes, Ms. Golden, this property is being sold as is, so it's the responsibility of the purchaser to take care of any environmental, other kinds of structural issues or things that need to be remedied?
That's correct. We did a Phase 1 environmental assessment before we figured out who we were gonna sell this to. We updated that when Nebco was interested in the property. That Phase 1 environmental assessment lists existing environmental conditions that might be on that site. There are some underground storage tanks that are on the site that the city is not required to remove, that Nebco is taking the property as is with those underground storage tanks, and is indemnifying the city for any environmental issues that might arise in the future.
Any other questions? Jocelyn, just for information?
Sure.
This property is kind of landlocked anyway, correct?
That's.
I mean, we have the tracks on one side, and we have Abel's, the baseball field on the other side, so we have this kind of landlocked property, correct?
That's correct. This is adjacent to the future Breslow Ice Hockey Site that's right here. That's gonna be under construction any day now. And then to the south is the festival space and the pedestrian bridge. I believe that's right there. So, it's got a lot of parking lots. The baseball field is to the north. There's a lot of parking lots around this space. And the agreement does contemplate that, it's currently zoned as P public, but it'll be zoned as H3, which planning department looked at the site and thought that made sense considering there's a lot of parking lots around in that area, what proposed uses might be for that site.
Pretty limited usage.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next, I'll call item 13, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Nebco, doing business as Western Sand and Gravel, authorizing the sale of approximately 8.46 acres of city-owned property generally located in the Lincoln Water System wellfields adjacent to the sand and gravel operation in Saunders County.
Good afternoon, Steve Hagenberger with the city law department. This sales agreement involves a very small piece of property along the edge of our current wellfield property. It, what's being suggested is selling eight and a half acres of property to Western Sand and Gravel because the lake that's there from the sand and gravel operations has encroached just slightly onto the Lincoln wellfield property. In examining what would be the best alternative to remedy that situation, both parties thought just selling a sliver of property approximately 100 feet in length along the edge of that lake to the Western Sand and Gravel property would be adequate for city of Lincoln purposes. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Do we have any reason to think that the lake might further encroach on the city property, or do we have a sense that this was caused by a specific set of circumstances that wouldn't likely to happen again?
Well, we've looked at aerial photos over the last 30 years of the property. The Western Sand and Gravel operation maintains that part of the encroachment was caused by the Platte River when it left its banks in 1993. Western Sand and Gravel, I think, would also acknowledge that part of the encroachment was caused by their mining operations. As part of the, one of the provisions in the agreement requires Western Sand and Gravel to take measures to protect that shoreline going forward.
Thank you.
Carl. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hagenberger, the city's wellfields, or some of the city's wellfields are immediately adjacent to this land, right?
Yes.
And does this limit in any way our production of water or access to those wellfields?
It has no, it has no effect on any of our production capabilities.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next would be item 14, approving an agreement between the city and Lancaster County to cooperate in various road construction, improvements, and road maintenance projects for county roads located within the three-mile zoning jurisdiction of the city.
Thank you. Roger, can you explain a little bit about why this agreement is needed and different from what you've done in the past?
Okay, absolutely. Roger Feiger, Public Works. The agreement before you is a blanket agreement that will allow the city to do desired and planned road construction or an improvement or maintenance for pieces of that roadway that fall outside the city limits and, but are in the county. And while the agreement talks about a three-mile limit, the city is certainly not interested, and we're not headed out to do road construction all over in the three-mile limit. Up to this point in time, anytime the city does a project and we approach the city limits, when you finish the project, there's a taper, there's sometimes a place where you're partly in the city, then you're in the county, and then you're back. We have to stop and get a separate agreement each and every time, sit down, work through the details of the agreement, bring that city council, then take it to the county board and get that approved. And the purpose and the intent of this agreement is to produce a blanket agreement that says when the city has an approved and appropriate project we're doing, and I'll give you two examples, I think, that will explain why this is a good thing to do. A blanket agreement then that would allow the city to send a set of review plans over the county engineer's office, they would review those, and provided that they meet their needs and whatnot, then the county engineer can approve those. The city would be paying to build the roadway, to buy any of the necessary rights of way. Once it's constructed, the county would review it and agree, or if there's something wrong, let us know, and we would fix that. Upon the completion of that, the county would continue to own and maintain and operate that street or that road until such time as it's annexed into the city. So our goal is, we're not going out in front of things, these are projects that are ongoing, and this blanket agreement, I think, is another example of the cooperation coordination within our local agreements that we do with the county. Got a couple of maps. The first one that I want to show is pursuant to Northwest 48th Street. You're all aware that we need to do some improvements on Northwest 48th Street. Up is north, this is West O Street, this is I-80, this is Northwest 48th Street. Today, the city limits of Lincoln are on the south side of I-80, and then they come down into about Holdridge Street. So we've got about a half a mile in there that's actually in the county. The city's currently working with NDOR, who's doing an I-80 project, and their project extends up approximately to where Vine Street would be. City coming down, it really makes no sense to leave a gap in those two brand-new roadways. It also makes sense that the project that should be built should be built to the city's standard. So in this case, with a blanket agreement in place, we prepare the plans, they go out to the county, they would review those. This is a project that's in the city CIP, appropriate for us to do. It's had all the reviews and approval. We would buy the right-of-way, build the roadway. The county will continue to maintain and operate that until such time as the rest of this property surrounding it would be annexed into the city. Just makes good use of efficient time, and again, it's a project that already has approval and is something we want to do. The second example really has more to do with the orderly growth and the development situation around the edge of our community. This is in southeast Lincoln. This is South 70th Street on the west, 84th Street here. This is Rockaby Road. Some of this shaded-in property is property currently owned or under option of a developer, and they are ready to start annexing and building homes in that area. It shows a Phase 1, a Phase 2, and a Phase 3. They're really not in a situation to annex a whole square mile or a whole mile. They're only annexing and bringing in the property and the lots that they reasonably think they can sell right at that point in time. If they annex the whole thing in, they also lose green belt exemptions on that. So, in this case, if they're gonna annex Phase 1, but in reality, the grades and the profiles to prepare Rockaby for the future urban roadway and to match the, needs to be graded now, all the way from 70th to 84th Street. If we grade it into the first driveway and we stop there, we're gonna have an eight-foot bank up to where the old roadway is. So it just makes sense to do the grading all the way. And again, in this case, the city would be doing that grading. In this case, the development community would be dedicating and giving up the right-of-way. The city doesn't have to buy that right-of-way. Once that roadway is graded, sanitary sewer put in and re-rocked, the county will continue to own and maintain and take care of that gravel road until such time as the city gets there. The city would propose paving just adjacent to the areas that are actually being annexed in and using impact fees and the dollars that come from that. So again, this is an opportunity with a blanket agreement to be able to work directly with the county engineer. It's a good thing, and again, these would only be for projects that are already in the pipeline and have approvals to move ahead. So, I'd answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item?
All right, next would be item 15, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of September 16th through the 31st, 2014.
Would you like to speak to the claims? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next would be item 16, approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Lancaster County for animal control services provided by Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Animal Control in Lancaster County and establishing the payment of services in the event of an emergency.
Thank you, Judy Halsted, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, on behalf of Animal Control Services. Just to let you know that this is put in place in the event of an emergency so that we can recoup federal, state, or local funding. The most recent episode that we did this was in 2004 when we did assist the county as a result of Halem. as a result of Hallow. Most of you know that that evening, the individuals were evacuated from Hallow so the emergency responders could get in, and animal control was requested to come in and assist to help retrieve some of the pets that were in Hallow. This basically just puts in writing what that agreement would be, and we can't do it on a handshake anymore and still get reimbursed. And it also makes clear that if FEMA or the Federal Emergency Management Agency or the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency doesn't reimburse Lancaster County, that they would still pay us. County Board approved this on September 23rd, and I'm just asking for your approval. Thanks.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
That would conclude our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing ordinance's second reading were items 11 through 13. Item 14 is the agreement between the city and Lancaster County for various road construction improvements and road maintenance projects for county roads located within the three-mile zoning jurisdiction, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Larian. Discussion, caller roll.
Oh.
Sorry, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I just wanted to thank Roger Feigert and Pam Dingman for cooperating, working together on trying to create this kind of efficiency and cooperation between the city and the county. It's supporting the growth of the community in some instances, and it seems like it makes a lot of sense, and it's allowing projects to move forward with more speed and in ways that will benefit our citizens. So thank you.
Any discussion? Caller roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 15 is the report of new impending claims against the city for September 16th through the 31st, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by John. Discussion, caller roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 16 is the interlocal agreement between the city and Lancaster County for animal control services, introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by John. Discussion, caller roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Ordinance's third reading, item 17, amending section 2.76.365 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to hours of work to provide that employees with a pay range prefixed by E who are eligible to retire will be required to retire within one year from the date they elect to reduce their hours, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy and seconded by John. Discussion, caller roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 18 is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter M to change the pay range of Building and Safety Manager from M03 to M02, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion, caller roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 19 is change of zone 14025, application of B&amp;J partnership for a change of zone to designate the O'Connell Galbraith House as an historic landmark on property generally located at South 9th and G Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, caller roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Ordinance's on first reading are items 20 and 21. Resolutions on first reading are items 22 and 23, and our pending list are items 24 through 28. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time as this is an open microphone session.
I'm Jane Swoboda. Wear roshi and put a cross on your door and fridge. I invite you to a paradise on earth. There are some corrections. Nobody knows what percent get over Ebola with eating only honey. Is it 2%, 10%, 50% or 90%? No one knows. More persons got Ebola in Omaha than the new states. They just went home and passed away. It is contagious to the air and the air when feces comes out. Anyone in the same room gets the disease. My sister, Teresa Swoboda, lived in southern Sudan, 100 miles from the first outbreak in 1976. My half-sister, Anne Marie Walsh, recently told me the cure is honey. Foreigner feds have been sending other diseases from Africa to American hospitals for five years, such as the flesh-eating bacteria from Ghana, Africa. Nobody needs them to. Don't allow any lethal herbs in our health food stores and equatorial groceries. Lethal herbs are agriimony, argan oil, astragalus, bay leaf, belladonna, black walnut oil, bone set, castor oil, cat's claw, elderflower, fennel, golden seal, holly, whorehound, livermort, lobelia, mace, marigold, marshmallow, mistletoe, moringa, motherwort, mulberry, philodendron, rui bose, red bush tea, rue, sage, slippery elm, and woodworm. Herbs not just good for humans are alcohol, almond oil, beer, basolia, burdock, butcher's broom, cayenne oil, foote, ginseng, gotacola, green tea, guarana, hemp, horse tail, hops, kombucha, kudzu, nicotine, nutmeg, Russian ginseng, sarsaparilla, shisandra, skullcap in any vaporizer mix, a person forget what happened yesterday. And it could be put into our classrooms. Tobacco, vodka, wine, wood betany, yarrow, and yerba mate. Those that are unknown are African mango, agnus castis, amla fruit, black cohosh, bushu leaf, butia superba root, butterbur, shadic brugra, shank piedra, sisas, cascuta, geranium, gravel root, india gooseberry, jujuba, picoja, cuaro, pu'eraria, merifika, stone root, sumar root, trephala, white oak, wild lettuce, zuling mushrooms. Herbs with testosterone making persons mean are catu abba bark, Cialis, horny goat weed, maca, mukuma, velvet bean, mara, puama, trabilis, Viagra, yuhimbie. Drugs we shouldn't have are betanut, cocaine, heroin, kat, levon, maca, mate, meth, marijuana, poppy, snuff, tonka bean. Take arginine for impotence because it is cardioprotective and doesn't make a man meaner. Lethal herbs have been for sale on the internet since Chinese took the internet in 2009 and bought 60,000 tons of arsenic to be added to juice and food in the refrigerator. End the evap stores because items could be used to homicide with lethal herbs. I'm sending this list to our police.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
Good.
Is that hello?
Yeah.
Um, I actually, I don't know how to do this because I actually have to speak for two separate groups. So do we do five minutes and then we, I sit down, come back up in five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes.
Okay, even though I want to speak for two separate groups? Okay. Works for me. Is my time? I was going to bring a clock because I, now I can trust you, how much time do I get? Five minutes, right? Okay. Are you ready? Looks like Lincoln's been really busy, right? Actually, I'd have never seen it if it hadn't been for the paper. We've been on late night news. I had a brother call me to say Lincoln, Nebraska doesn't know the difference between a man or a boy and a girl. I said, "What are you talking about?" He said, "Turn the TV on." He said, "You're on national news." He said, "It's easy, an in and outy." I said, "What are you talking about? What are you talking about?" So we got the paper, okay? I said, "Well, you know how lucky Lincoln is, Lincoln, Nebraska, that they didn't get the Sunday World Herald?" This is dated, I don't know what is dated. Somebody gave it to me. I like to buy wire, okay? This is what it says. It says, "102 misdemeanors, 33 felonies, one deadly crime. A World Herald special investigation. Nebraska's early release scandal allows convicts who should have been in prison to commit at last." Okay? Next one says, this is our leadership now. This one says, October 11th, Saturday, October 11th, 2014. Corrections director acted against legal advice. Corrections hearings, okay? Then we got another one that says, "City proposes new standards for business retail districts." Okay? Then we got another one that says, "Wildcats contest Husker D's conditioning. Huskers lose to another unranked opponent." Here's another one. This is again Omaha World Herald. These other ones are Lincoln Journal Star. Disputed course is about accepting that history isn't black and white. Here, now this is a good one. This is a really good one. But this here is Tuesday, October 7th, 2014. Law agencies need to account for $13 million. Feds demand paperwork for $13 million in grants to Nebraska law enforcement agencies. Um, I did see some kind of good ones. Here's about the guy, the video found in Lincoln thrift store, part of Found Footage Fest, called Tiger Moves. That was a good one. That was nice to see. Here's one about Vikings see the light, so that was nice to see. Here's that Cindy, the one who makes all the, does all the things when she helps people, frozen dinner. Here's one, Smoyer emphasizes experience on campaign trail, then talks about him getting a DUI. I said, "What are you talking about?" Here's about a little boy getting run over. Boy hurt in crash remains in hospital. Oh, that brings us to the man that got hit on West O. That's right down four blocks from my house, right by where the lottery winners won the lottery. You guys realize 18 overhead streetlights were off. You guys realize that, right? The contractor did not turn the lights back on. When the accident happened, I actually saw it from my property. People came and got me because I am the founder of the Neighborhood Association. Those cops never come to our side of the street. Never come and talk to anybody at the taco truck, never come and talk to anybody in the brick house, never come and talk to anybody at Genesis Auto. These are all business owners who actually saw things, nobody came. So the, and he's not a young man, he's an old man. He's 58 years old. His name is Maurice Taylor. I went to the hospital to check on him. In our neighborhood, he's called Charles because he's somebody's brother. He's got a mama somewhere. There's no family there, there's nobody checking on him. So we're sending cards because there's nothing set up for him, there's no flowers, there's no nothing. I'd hate that to be one of my brothers somewhere and nobody taking care of him. So actually, I just want to make sure everybody understands that there were 18 where this, where it says Steve Glenn and it says Nebraska, our diamonds. You could not see it from Harris Bridge Cleardown to the McDonald's, you could not see, to where the Frank Damien Memorial is when he got run over. I was sitting at the brick house at the taco truck. You could not see the man who was right here who had run him over. You couldn't see the, the speed limit sign, anything, because it was that dark. When I call the police, I have to fight with the police. I'm a property owner. I'm sick and tired of fighting with the police. I'm sick and tired of the dispatchers hanging up on me. If they need extra police, they don't come help my neighborhood. My neighborhood is seven blocks long, two blocks wide. Somebody's going to come and start helping that neighborhood. 16th and P got that Tiff money, but over here, 1st and L falling apart. That's not Delgado driveway, that's West L Street. Somebody's going to get over there and take care of those kids over there. Our neighborhood is falling apart. And that crusher's on 3rd and Q. All that nasty toxic stuff goes into downtown Lincoln on that arena. Did somebody tell Paul McCartney all that toxic stuff was there? That's all I need. Do you want me to put my name?
You do have to sign in, please. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I'd move for adjournment.
Second. Seconded by Roy. Discussion, caller roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
We are adjourned.